Good evening. And welcome to the regular meeting in the Worcester City Council this Monday, May 21st, 2018. It's after 7:30. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, June 4th, 2018. And I shall note that Mr. Ansel said that he will be on vacation, so we'll need all six of us here if we're going to possibly pass legislation. With five, we just have to have a first reading. I was going to say Mr. DePaulo, but that doesn't fit. Mr. Gibbons, would you please call the roll?
Oh, sorry.
He's new at this. He's tried very hard not to be asked to do this again. He's doing a good job.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Bostansik?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
Mr. Calvin?
Here.
We have a full complement, so we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I would ask you to join the City Council and resign the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will look for an approval of the minutes of May 7th, 2018. Motion by Ms. Warden.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. The minutes of May 7th, 2018 have been approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome. And turn the floor over to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Council folks, I passed out three pieces of paper to you as you got ready to start the meeting tonight. One was a letter that I just saw 10 minutes ago, but I thought you would enjoy reading it. It's from Tom Mauer, who you all know and who's visited with us on different occasions in his professional capacities. The first paragraph is more of a personal nature, so I'm not going to go into that. But he gets to the second paragraph and he said, "The reason for my letter is twofold. First, to recognize the true professionalism and training from the officers within our fire department and their kindness and true caring attitude for these calls in need. Secondly, the excellent coordinated communications between WorkHog and our city services. It was flawless and can only get better." So I thought you would enjoy hearing some good things about our city services and from a real case scenario. So I just wanted to give that to you, and you can read the rest of it at your leisure. One thing that happened since last time when we met, Jonathan and I went over to a Team Neo event over in Independence. It's our association with the Jobs Ohio at the state level, and it was just sort of a regrouping to explain to folks sort of how we're moving forward with the Team Neo and the Jobs Ohio crew. Nothing overly remarkable from the event. It's just nice to make the connections with those folks. Actually, we sat at the table with folks from the OAR DC and the Bi-Ohio group, so actually that was a really good connecting time for us on that. Just to keep you informed that we are still doing the economic development things as we should be, and just to keep you informed on that. One of the last things I have is yesterday, we had a bike trail dedication. It's not our first bike trail, but it's the first time we've really stood back and said, let's tell our story a little bit so that the public really understands what we're trying to do. And so it was up at the Burbank property on the Kenny Fields, Kenny Soccer Fields there. And it was to dedicate that piece along Burbank that was put in the last year. This coming year, in fact, starting here shortly, if Roger's back there, he can give us the latest and greatest timeline on the thing. But here within, hopefully, the next month, you're going to start seeing the bike trail being extended down Burbank south of Highland, and it will get the whole way down to Bloomington over at College of Worcester. So that's the piece that's going to be constructed this year. We did take a major step forward, though, and that's really what I want to tell you about. This green eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of paper, or black with the green printing on it, is something that we finally were able to establish. It's a way to raise funds for the pieces of the trail, both inside and outside the city. But really, the main focus was to try to bring the trail together outside of Worcester, between Worcester and Fredericksburg, where we're trying to get to the National Trails, the Trails Network, Trailhead is there, and that's the closest one to it. But this, we worked with Wayne County Community Foundation, and Kurt Holmes and Christopher Bueller are the co-presidents of what we're calling Wayne Trails to help foster that trail outside of the city and to raise funds to help make that happen. So they've started an account over at Wayne County Community Foundation, the Wayne Trails Fund, and that is to help originally to get signage up, to mark the trail with signs. And Mr. Myers has been very instrumental in helping move that forward. So I think we're finally getting there, Scott.
I'm tired of him with the complaint.
So I just wanted to give you folks the knowledge. It is a total charitable donation. If anybody's interested in it, you can use it as a tax write-off. I'm not giving you financial advice or accounting advice. You'll have to talk to your own accountants on that. But just wanted you to be aware of it because it is a big step forward for us. And then I wanted to give you a front and back of the two trails. The front one are the latest and greatest trail plan inside of the city, and that's the one that we're all intimately involved in and trying to keep moving that forward. But then also on the outside of the city, the one that's going to be trying to get down to Fredericksburg, Ohio, is on the back of the thing. So that gives you the latest and greatest trail-wise on what we're trying to achieve. So that's everything I had. I think Joel has one thing that he wanted to share with you that I think he just got today, so thank you for the time.
Just to let you know, I think we mentioned at a previous meeting that Chief Saley and Assistant Chief Murphy in our fire department had completed the Ohio Fire Executive Officer Training. So they just completed that. Well, in addition, Chief Saley also just obtained his Ohio Fire Chief's credential, and that's a completely separate thing. And that's a credentialing program done by the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association, sets forth goals needed for a fire chief to establish a higher degree of professionalism so they can better serve their department, their community, and their organizations. And the whole goal is to promote professional development of the chief fire officer and assist those chiefs in their daily operations, management, and leadership. And it's an ongoing thing, continuing add is required for that, including occupational education, fire service-related training specifically for that position of the fire chief. So Chief Saley's been reactive and trying to continue to improve the professionalism both of himself and the department. So I just wanted to acknowledge him for that and just to let everybody know that we do have a very top-notch fire department. One quick thing, just to let you know on a different note, we passed some legislation a while back on small cellular facilities, and we did that right when there was a push for some agencies to install those facilities, and the state had sort of slipped in a law that took away a good bit of municipalities' ability to regulate those. There were several lawsuits filed. We joined one of those. The result of that was several municipalities, the High Municipal League, representatives of the cellular industry, and the state, representative of the state, got together. They came up with a separate law just for small cell facilities. They did consider or add most of all of what we were requesting. They obviously didn't do as much as we would have liked, so you still can't apply zoning. But they did provide a few more safeguards for municipalities. So you will be receiving some updated legislation now that we know exactly what this new law says. Kevin's been working on this. Our city engineer and his staff have been working on this. We've actually been contacted by a lot of other municipalities asking for help since we were sort of ahead of the curve on this, and we've been working with them. So you will be seeing that. We're going to try to get that to you. I don't know that we're going to get it to you in time for three readings prior to the law going into effect. So if the governor signed it, there's 90 days. So we're working to get that to you. It's really just slightly modifying the legislation based on some tweaks that they made in the law. Probably first meeting in July, hoping to get that to you. We're hoping also there's other municipalities that are doing things, and want to make sure we're all doing similar types of things. So just want to give you a heads up. That's coming.
All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to petitions. We have two Liquor Control notices. First one's from Aldi Inc., and the other one's Lefar Holding. If you would just read the title, Mr. Gibbons.
Aldi Incorporated, Ohio, 3743 Burbank Road, Worcester, Ohio, 44691. This is an application for a C1 and C2 permit.
And that would be at the location they're intending to build at where the old Ryan's Steakhouse is. As you probably recall, because I've said it quite often, we have three options. We can request a hearing here, request a hearing in Columbus, or waive the hearing. It's whatever your pleasure is.
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel, second by Mr. Bostansik. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Just a second. See, you can put...
Yes, yes, yes.
This is the Vinton Woods. She's got this for...
Oh, she's got it for Vinton Woods.
I can use this one. I don't think she had any for this.
She has a blank one here?
Yeah. There you go.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Cavan, yes.
Cavan, sorry.
That's fine.
Mr. Bostansik?
Yes.
He's intending not to be asked back, I'm telling you. And then we have a second.
The second one is Lefar Holding Company doing business with Wild Ginger Chinabistro, 3694 Burbank Road, Lot 7586, and patio, Worcester 44691. And this is for a D5 permit.
And once again, we can request a hearing here, request a hearing in Columbus, or waive the hearing.
Motion to waive the hearing?
Motion to waive the hearing by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Bostansik?
Yes.
So both hearings are waived, and I'm sure when Ms. DePaulo feels better, I hope she has a speedy recovery, we'll let the Bureau of Liquor Control through the Department of Commerce know that we waive hearing on both the liquor applications. We did not have anyone sign up to speak this evening, so we'll move right into new business since old business. And I don't think we had any committees meet and no public hearings. So we'll start with new business. And Mr. Gibbons, if you would, read the title, Resolution Number 2018, Day 031. It'll be presented by Mr. Bostansik. It's presently slated for three readings.
A resolution declaring it necessary to clean the detention basin servicing the Vinton Woods allotment and to establish preliminary assessments to the property owners and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bostansik, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll just read what Roger wrote for me. Pretty succinct in this. This is a request to declare the necessity of cleaning up the detention basin servicing the Vinton Woods allotment and to establish preliminary assessments to the 17 affected property owners. This project will remove debris from the private detention basin and all that conduit, as well as reestablish a drainage way into the basin. Last year, several property owners called the city to make aware that the basin was filling and not draining. At that time, the allotment was provided the opportunity to complete the work by themselves of cleaning the basement, of cleaning the basin, and with no homeowners' association and no way of collecting the monies, we requested help from the city to complete the task. With approval of this legislation, the city will hire a contractor and manage the cleaning of the basement, basin, and then issue assessments to the owners. This legislation will do two things. It said it will declare the necessity of cleaning the detention basin, as well as establish preliminary assessments for the homeowners. And there's an estimated, this is just estimated, is about a $5,000 assessment. This is not a... The passing of this legislation will not affect the city, will not cost the city anything. All the total costs will be assessed to the homeowners.
Sounds like it's about $300 more or less per homeowner. Mr. Cavan?
I just wondered what the issue is. Why is it backing up?
There's skids and leaves and all kinds of stuff.
Because it's in a wooded allotment?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Silvestri, did you add something to that?
To your point, Mr. President, it's just an even, split 17 ways, right? Is that how they do it? Okay. That's what I thought. Okay.
Nobody has any further questions or comment. I would like to put this on third and final reading so the project can be suspended. Done.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bostansik. Is there a second? Or Mr. Ansel first. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mr. Bostansik?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mr. Bostansik, I look to you for a motion.
Motion to pass.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostansik. Is there a second?
Second.
This time I saw Mr. Silvestri's hand go up first. Would you please call the roll on the motion? Well, if anyone have anything else to say before I get to that point. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mr. Bostansik?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018, Day 031 passes. Brings us to Resolution Number 2018, Day 032. This one looks a little different because it's the one prepared by the, I think, the Department of Transportation, if I'm not mistaken. Since it's a contract, despite it doesn't have all the language, we will need to suspend the rules to pass it this evening. Before I get to Mr. Bostansik, I'll turn to Mr. Gibbons and have him read the title, if he would be so kind.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the bridge replacement on State Route 302 within the city of Worcester and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bostansik, the floor is yours again.
Mr. Gibbons pretty much said the whole thing. This bridge is on a state route, and therefore it will not cost the city any money to fix. Most of us are probably pretty familiar with the area. It's at the barbershop near the entrance of the fairgrounds on West Liberty, right across from the main ticket office there. The only cost to the city potentially would be we would be responsible for routine maintenance, as I understand it. I believe those projects are slated for 2019. That's pretty much it. And like I said, no cost to the city, so I think it's a pretty good deal.
Do you have a motion?
I... Well, we can't do third and final on this, Cam.
Yeah, we can.
Well, we can on this? I thought you said something about...
No, I said we'd need three readings to suspend the rules.
Oh, I see.
Unless we suspend the rules.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Put this on third and final.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bostansik. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Cavan. Mr. Gibbons, if you would, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mr. Bostansik?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Mr. Bostansik?
I would move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostansik. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Cavan. Any other questions? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and of course, free is always our favorite price take on these projects.
I didn't spend any money today for change.
Yeah. How about that? What's wrong with you?
I don't know.
Yeah, your first...
First one, I didn't spend any money.
Yeah, in your first meeting, you spent like a million and a half. Anything else? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mr. Bostansik?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 2018, Day 32 passes. Brings us to our final piece of legislation, Resolution Number 2018, Day 033. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers. It's slated for three readings at the moment. If you would, Mr. Gibbons, would you please read the title? And I think after this, other than scribbling a few things down, your duties are almost to the end.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to apply for a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for certain improvements at the proposed Venture Boulevard Park. To accept any such grant if awarded, execute any necessary documents in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Bostansik. This park...
You got a promotion there, Phil. Congratulations.
Mr. President.
That's okay.
This is the park area that was donated to the city adjacent to the new tennis, indoor tennis club out on Venture Boulevard. The total for the project is going to be around $800,000. This is an application. I believe this one's to Nature Works, right? So if we get this along with the State of Ohio grant, should we have over half of this hopefully funded? So you've been provided a beautiful map of how this is going to work, I would imagine, by Jonathan. Thank you. So if there are questions or in more detail, why don't you tell us a little bit more about where we're headed with this? You put a lot of time in on this.
Sure. Thank you very much. This is a public-private partnership. The team corporation is associated with the Aspen Racquetball Club, and that is a $2 million, tennis, a $2 million tennis facility that's being constructed. And as part of that, this facility is already attracting visitors in throughout northeastern Ohio as opposed to different tournaments, and it was welcoming different teams from universities and also other clubs into the city. So it's a great opportunity for us to be able to attract visitors. There is roughly 10 acres of land that could be available, and the organization would like to make a donation to the city, but they'd also like to see development take place that would welcome people to actually be able to tour and see the property. And so we're exploring through this grant the ability to construct an accessible trail, approximately eight feet wide, go about three-quarters of a mile, and wind through an area of gently changing terrain. We have visitors up along the creek. We have boardwalks so that people could be able to experience and see close proximity of islands and aquatic environments without necessarily disturbing them as well. And when visitors first arrive at the park, they'll be greeted with parking. We've got a million space, restaurants, and solid local utility suites, and other areas for recreation. And the whole thing would be designed for accessibility so that we could welcome one and all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. If anyone has no further questions, in order to meet the application deadline for this early in June, we would like to move this to third and final reading, so I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Mr. Ansel, would you please call the roll to suspend the rules?
Mr. Bostansik?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Mr. Myers, do you have another note?
Yes, I would like to move to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, motion to adopt. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bostansik. Last chance to comment or ask questions. All this is is an application for the grant, and if we get any money to be able to apply it and to execute documents. So hopefully, you can work your magic, Mr. Millay. And I had to look twice if that was you. I don't often see you with spectacles on your nose.
Yeah, I have a slight issue with contact lines.
Okay, so I'm not losing my mind at this in this particular regard. I thought maybe Father Time was finally catching up on you. Anything else? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bostansik?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018, Day 033 passes. That brings us to miscellaneous portion, and we'll just go down the roll. Whoa, Mr. Cavan?
Nothing to add.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
I have to agree with Mr. Bostansik. It is refreshing to have an evening where, thanks to the residents of Vinton Woods, the Ohio Department of Transportation, and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, respectively, we didn't spend any of the taxpayers' money this evening, so... But a lot of good things happening. Happy to see the bike trail project moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that update. I know I get asked that from time to time. Someone had mentioned the accessibility of those maps. Hopefully, groups like Ride On and other companies like that are providing those, if they are.
I think they are also. It's also on our city website, so anyone can download those.
But I see they're being used, especially in weather like this, so thanks for that update.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. The Parks and Recreation Committee met earlier today, and a lot of good things happening with the maintenance department and the parks folks. One thing in particular, I want to extend a thank you to Church of the Nazarene. They had their Big Serve Day, they call it, on May 19th. They had over 125 adults and a couple of dozen kids volunteering and completed a long list of projects on behalf of the city, which was really wonderful to see. They had a great time, and much appreciated the work that they do. They do this every year. In addition, as the mayor noted, there was the dedication of the trail up there, the ceremony, and we had adult ride and the kids' ride, both up around there. And then last, congratulations on getting the bike path, Wayne Trails, off. That's a wonderful thing. We've been talking about for over a year. I know that the mayor's going to now look to me at the next meeting and say, okay, now get the signs up. So that's my role. So we do anticipate later this year getting the signs along the roadways to designate a safe route from here to Millersburg eventually.
route, and the cars can be, know that, know that they're there. So that's the first step. And what Mayor Brenneman did was the first step to get that going, too. So, thank you.
Going off the, I, I saw you raise your hand. I know you came in late.
I apologize. I'm not very used to this. I had a situation that brought me here tonight. Concerns my 62-year-old mom.
Well, this is probably.
Not the place for it.
Yeah, you might need to talk to a member of the administration if it has to do with city services or.
Has nothing to do with children's services.
No, I said city, city, the city of Worcester.
City, I've tried that. Okay, I've made numerous phone calls. I've called people that claim that their boss wants to talk to me. And it's really, it's an issue that needs to be faced as a community. Okay? My mom's 62 years old, and the last month, she's been ripped off by my little brother, who's continuously ripped the community off.
Yeah.
Look, that, you know, you can say it's personal. They can say it's personal. It was never personal at first, okay? It was personal when everybody kept telling me, "No, the answer ain't here, it's over there." Okay? I don't know where the answer is, but it's got to start here if it's going to go anywhere.
Well, if you think a crime has been committed, you should.
The crime's been committed, the charges have been filed, they, he commits crimes, he calls them, he reports the charges, they don't even come and take the report from the person that the stuff was stolen from. They take it from the person that stole the stuff. Okay? That's a problem. Seriously. I mean, I'm no saint, okay? I'm no one. But you know what? When people continue to let people rob the people of this community, and he's robbed more than just my mom, he's robbed a whole bunch of people in this community, and they continue to allow it to happen. Okay? I don't know where to go with the answers, or to get to you. I've been where I know to go.
Does your mom live in the city?
My mom does live in the city. She lives right down on the Seaboard.
Well, maybe.
Okay? The city, this is where we're at, okay? I've made phone calls, numerous phone calls, to try and get him removed from my mom's house. You don't want to hear this, I understand that. You think somebody else should hear it. Okay? Somebody else probably should hear it, but like you, they don't want it.
I'm the guy that should hear it.